I am calling to order the council meeting for Tuesday, March 5th of 2019. If we could all please stand for a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance. In addition, I would like to say special prayers to Hank Cisco and his family.
I pledge allegiance to the tribe of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, united in the Constitution of the United States of America.
Madam Secretary, may I please have your call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Derrick Perry, Rebecca Smith, Heather Lewis, Sonya Sanders.
Here. Would a member of council like to make a motion to approve council meeting minutes from February 19th of 2019? Question, Olivia Brady? Thank you, Councilwoman Brady. With that addition, would a member of council like to make a motion to approve the council meeting minutes with the addition?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? With the edits approved, those meeting minutes are approved and passed. Earlier this evening, we had an executive session pertaining to litigation and real Vice President Lewis, announcements, please.
Thank you, Madam President. The announcements for March 5th, 2019, Facebook chat with the municipal administrator, Crandall Jones, will take place on Tuesday, March 12th, at 6:00 PM on the municipal Facebook page. Please submit your questions beforehand to pio@narstown.org. The Narstown Recreation Baseball registration is now open for ages four to 12. You can register online at narstown.org, and for more information, email recreation@narstown.org. The Summer Concert Series will kick off June 9th. The entire line is available at narstown.org or the Recreation Facebook page. I can read you some. To the Max, June 9th, Main Street Band, Dean Garofalo, The Red Hots, Wildflower, The Morning After, High Notes, Touche the Band, and the British Invasion Years are some of the nine. Town Hall for Councilwoman Valerie Scott Cooper will be held on April 18th at 6:00 PM at the Montgomery Senior Apartments on Powell Street. Information on the new recreation center, Census 2020, and Representative Madeline Dean will be discussed. Also, we have a save the date for April 6th, which will be Narstown Day, Party in the Park, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Elmwood Park and in the vicinity. Visit narstown.org for more details. Is there any other announcements from any other council members? Councilman Jones?
Good evening. There is a dragon boat fundraiser, March 9th, at the Lower Providence Presbyterian Church. They are preparing youth to compete in Thailand. So they're having a spaghetti dinner, $17 a plate, Saturday, March 9th. At that time, I don't have, I'll have to get that at a later date. Next event is a Narstown area high school prom fair. That event's going to take place at the high school, March 30th, 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Anyone interested in donating prom items, dresses, jewelry, et cetera, can reach out to the high school, (610) 630-5090. One last announcement, the Narstown Men of Excellence will host a TED Talk event at Stewart Middle School. That's going to be March 23rd at 6:00 PM. Thanks.
Any other announcements? Yes, I have two. First off, happy 95th birthday to the Elmwood Park Zoo, and also happy later birthday to Councilwoman Brady. Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Lewis. Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments this evening?
Yes, we do. Anna Shin?
Hello, this is Anna Shin from the police cell in the 36th to Main Street in Norristown. And then this is the same situation last time I just here, I just made a speech about the food truck. I want to make a speech one more time about the food truck, the influence to my, our Norristown small business. First of all, I want to thank the council members for all of the work they do to help the small business and resident of the Norristown. Today, I would like to discuss the food truck that parks in front of the Norristown courthouse every day. I would like to talk about few ways that the food truck and its local location negatively infects small business in Norristown. In a place like Norristown where there isn't an extremely large amount of people, it's hard enough for business to compete against each other without having a food truck parked right outside. The food truck doesn't bring new customer, but rather it costs into the small business in Norristown every day. The food truck also creates issue with the traffic and parking and noise problem, noise problem. The truck parks everywhere it wants without regulation, causing issue for traffic and pedestrian on the street. Finally, the food truck isn't a part of the Norristown community. They don't have the idea by hiring Norristown residents or donating to facilities. Wherever the small business are growing and benefiting Norristown. The last time we went to the Norristown council meeting, we learned that you are doing your best to help grow the small business in Norristown. If the food truck, which only takes away from those business and the health of the entire area, is allowed to stay as it is, the problem will continue to get worse. We went around and collected the signatures and comments from restaurants owners and residents asking that you would not renew the food truck's permit this year. And I got, the last time I just already sent all council members the letters and the signature petition letter from the copy of that. And thank you for your consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Shin.
That's all there is.
Madam Secretary, do we have any communication this evening?
No, we don't.
Next order of business we have are the appointments, beginning with Resolution 19-113 for the entry-level firefighter. Council, do we have any questions or comments? Seeing none, would a member of council like to make a motion to approve, I'm sorry, to appoint Kevin J. Murphy as an entry-level firefighter for the Narstown Fire Department? Madam Secretary, may I please have your call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Derrick Perry, Rebecca Smith, Heather Lewis, Sonya Sanders.
Aye. The ayes have it, and Resolution 19-113 is approved and passed. Aye, Kevin J. Murphy.
Aye, Kevin J. Murphy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or that I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Home Rule Charter of the municipality of Narstown.
The Home Rule Charter of the municipality of Narstown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Narstown.
And the municipality of Narstown.
I will discharge the duties.
I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As firefighter for the municipality of Narstown.
As firefighter for the municipality of Narstown.
With honor and fidelity.
With honor and fidelity.
I will uphold.
I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce the laws.
And enforce the laws.
Of Pennsylvania.
Of Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Narstown.
And the municipality of Norristown.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Welcome, and thank you. The next order of business we have for appointments is Resolution 18-142, and that would be for the police officer. For Officer Mark Delaney. Would a member of council like to make a motion? All in, I'm sorry, Madam Secretary, may I please have your call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Derrick Perry, Rebecca Smith, Heather Lewis, Sonya Sanders.
Aye. The ayes have it. Resolution 18-142 is approved and passed. Chief Talbot?
I'm Mark Delaney.
I'm Mark Delaney.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Charter of the municipality of Narstown.
The Charter of the municipality of Narstown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And those of Narstown.
And those of Narstown.
I will discharge the duties of my office.
I will discharge the duties of my office.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
For the municipality of Narstown.
For the municipality of Narstown.
With honor.
With honor.
And fidelity.
And fidelity.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
Those of Narstown.
Those of Narstown.
Without consideration of a person's race.
Without consideration of a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Thank you, Judge Lawrence. Next order of business we have is for planning and municipal development, beginning with Resolution 19-105 for the zoo parking lot expansion.
As council is aware, the zoo has been to council on more than one occasion. There was a lot that was discussed about the waivers in the last workshop meeting. Council was concerned about screening issues pertaining to trees, and council was also concerned about the islands. I believe the solicitor is going to take us through the resolution so that we can come to a conclusion.
Thank you for your explanation. Ms. Musany, Mr. Solicitor?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Before your desks tonight, council members, is the revised resolution for number 105-19, which is the approval for the preliminary and final plan approval of the zoo's proposed parking expansion. Before I begin, I believe the applicant is here tonight, represented by council, Mr. Cullen, as well as Mr. Eustace, the engineer, and Mr. Zone. If you want to come up to the dais, or I should say, the podium, in case if there are any questions, as I'm kind of going through this resolution. So the council is aware, subsequent to the workshop meeting where the zoo was present and council had some questions and concerns, there have been further dialogue between staff, as well as the engineer, the municipality's engineer. Ted is here, present for the engineer's office, as well as the solicitor's office, making revisions based off of the comments and discussion that was there. What you will see before you tonight is substantially similar to what was previously presented, but with some minor tweaks. So with that, I'd like to go through the resolution so that everybody's working off the same page. As discussed before, and as set forth in the beginning portion, what the zoo is proposing is essentially a three-phase development project that would include during Phase 1, the construction of two parking lots with spaces along Harding Boulevard, as well as the construction of a boardwalk connecting the new parking area to the zoo entrance, and paving a lot adjacent to the existing softball fields, a new driveway that connects the zoo's existing main lot to the softball field lot and associated stormwater infrastructure and landscaping. The Phase 2 portion of the proposal would involve construction of an access road off of West Johnson Highway, as well as the construction of additional parking lot. That would also include signage to address a turning radius issue with regard to that new parking lot area. And finally, with regard to Phase 3, they're proposing the construction of a road connecting the new parking lots with the driveway at the existing entrance, as well as the construction of an eight additional space parking lot and restriping of the lower lot, oh no, I apologize, the restriping of the lower parking lot, correct me if I'm wrong, this actually occurs during Phase 1. So I apologize that that's misstated here, but that would occur during Phase 1. As noted also in the whereas clause, the proposed project is going to include certain stormwater and landscaping improvements, including a bioretention basin, surface detention basins, and three subsurface detention basins. Also contained within the resolution before you tonight are 11 conditions that the applicant would have to satisfy should council decide to approve this resolution tonight. I would like to just go through those 11, just to list them off, so that the applicant who's here tonight can hear them. The first one would be compliance with all conditions set forth in the Panoni Engineering Review Letters dated January 4th, 2019, and the Panoni Stormwater Review Letter dated February 21st, 2019, unless otherwise waived in accordance with this resolution. Believe the applicant has already received a copy of the February 21st, 2019 Stormwater Review Letter, which basically sets forth the stormwater fees that would be associated with the project. Number 2 would be compliance with all conditions imposed by the Norristown Zoning Hearing Board by their decision dated July 24th, 2018, and the amended zoning decision dated November 16th, 2018. Number 3 would be compliance with the Fire Marshal Review Letter dated December 18th, 2018, that requests that the new proposed driveway grades be at or below 10%, so as to avoid damage to the fire trucks and fire apparatuses traversing said driveways. Number 4 would be payment of a landscaping fee in lieu in the amount of $85,460, which amount shall be paid prior to the issuance of any permits related to the project, as well as the construction and maintenance of the additional landscaping buffer along the Harding Boulevard right-of-way and site, as shown in the plan as approved by the municipal engineer attached here to as Exhibit A. That was a plan that's already been reviewed by the municipal engineer and approved, and shows additional landscaping along the Harding Boulevard area, in addition to what was already presented previously. Number 5 would be proof of court authorization or judicial approval from the Montgomery County Orphans Court for their proposed parking uses, as I believe the applicant previously informed you and our office. There's currently a deed restriction with regard to this area that will require Orphans Court approval, so both the municipality and the zoo, as well as the county, have already worked together to draft and complete a petition to be filed with the Orphans Court, that hopefully will be reviewed, and ultimately, this would be subject to the Orphans Court approval. Number 6, proof of East Norton Township's review of the plans and no objection to the plans and proposed development as submitted. 7, preparation and recordation of a blanket stormwater drainage judgment in a form acceptable to the municipal engineer and municipal solicitor. 8, execution of a stormwater operations and maintenance agreement in a recordable form acceptable to the municipal engineer and municipal solicitor. 9, execution of a land development agreement in a recordable form acceptable to the municipal engineer and municipal solicitor. 10, execution of a financial security agreement in a recordable form acceptable to the municipal engineer and municipal solicitor. And 11, payment of all outstanding fees owed to the municipality. The applicant has requested various waivers, which are then listed in the next section of the proposed resolution. If I may, I'd actually like to break these down essentially into two categories. The first category I will lump together is essentially waiver requests 1 through 16. These are all requests that were previously discussed and that the municipality's own engineer had no objection to, and they were basically housekeeping matters based off of the proposed plans. The second set, 17 through 21, those waiver requests all related to the parking islands. I believe that there was discussion at the workshop meeting with regard to the zoo's request for a waiver of the parking islands. The municipality code requires parking islands to be inserted or to be located within proposed parking lot areas. You know, without going into too much detail, Mr. Cullen, would you just, in one or two sentences, make an explanation as to why you want that waiver request?
Yes. The actual waiver request would result in 18 additional spaces. The islands themselves, while they may have tree beauty and maybe thought of being appealing, the maintenance issues associated with them in a parking lot are extremely high. The amount of water flow that would actually be absorbed by those very small basins would not be high, and therefore, we're requesting the greater good of maybe the additional spaces that we'd originally planned over those specific islands.
Okay. And I believe the municipal engineer takes essentially no position with regard to those waiver requests, and that it's really a discretionary question for council. Is that correct, Ted?
Yes, correct.
So with that, Madam President, unless there are any specific questions by council with regard to what I will call Category 1 or Category 2, as you will see in this resolution, the way I, the way our office had drafted it, we basically have approved and denied with regard to each waiver request. Council certainly has the right to approve or deny any specific waiver request, and is not bound by whatever the recommendations are of its professional consultants. So, I mean, unless council has any specific questions with any of the waivers, what I was going to propose was that we, instead of going through a line-by-line motion for each individual waiver, I would just essentially lump 1 through 16 together as one vote for approve or deny, and number 17 through 21 as one vote for approve or deny. So at this time, does council have any questions with regard to the proposed waivers?
Oh, go ahead. Councilwoman Scott Cooper.
My only question has to do with, you know, the 18 additional spaces because of the decrease in number of islands. It's going to provide a larger space to be cleaned for snow or debris from, you know, what, the whole thing in itself is going to be additional expense in terms of cleaning to keep it clean. Do you have someone now who does that, and are they quick to handle the additional ones?
We absolutely do. RT Landscaper.
I'm sorry?
We have an outsourced company that handles the landscaping. Yes, ma'am.
Which has the request to handle the additional?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Brady.
Thank you. Could you refresh my memory? I know this doesn't, this actually doesn't specifically have to do with waivers, but could you refresh my memory, what was discussed in the workshop about the Phase 2 improvements to the road that's going into, I guess, where about any of the roads, going into the parking lot next to, I guess it's the end-off area?
Yes.
Can you explain a little bit of what's being improved, and also, have you already contacted the residents on that area to get that, or is that, as that phase comes into flow?
So, to give you a little bit of history, what, the property in question that I believe you referred to was owned by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So we have reached out to the Commonwealth, DCNR, the Department of General Services, to get the ball rolling to secure an easement. Through further evaluation, it was determined that a better solution might be to put in a functioning parking lot with a dead-end operation, which provides a T-turn configuration. This has been discussed with your engineer. We are proposing to proper design according to your codes with a proper signage. So therefore, there is no longer a need to gain access to that driveway.
Okay. So that section that's talking about, in the amendments, the Phase 2 improvements to that road, such as skating, or striding, or what do you guys think is on?
I'm sorry. So, the Phase 2 would include the construction of a, at this point, it would be a 32-space parking lot with the proper signage, proper turnaround. It would be paved. It would also provide access to the lower ball field. So that access is actually being built during the Phase 1 operation. So during Phase 1, the circulation for a patron would have the ability to go into the main entrance of the zoo, explore the possibility of parking as close as possible to the front facility. If that field is occupied, it then provides the patron the ability to go to the existing lower parking lot. And if for some reason that facility's occupied and there's no space available, it provides the patron the ability to connect up by the ball fields and the upper main field. That's all being proposed in Phase 1. That also provides for emergency access circulation. So that is all being achieved upfront in Phase 1. I hope that answers your question.
But all these improvements, I, when I was reading this, I thought this had to do with the entrance from Johnson Highway to the parking lot.
So for Phase 2, what we're actually doing is we're actually going to increase the ability of circulation by connecting the Phase 1 parking lot to West Johnson Highway. And in addition to that, it would be the further expansion of the parking facility to include those 34 spaces that are designated to be built in Phase 2.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Eustace, with regard to that access to Johnson Highway, is that the grade concern that the fire marshal had referenced? Is that the same driveway?
Well, the existing grade on that driveway exceeds the fire marshal's preferred recommendation of-
I just wanted to address that, that was a specific thing that was already addressed in the waiver request and by the fire marshal, that access that you're talking about.
Correct. So our circulation was submitted and reviewed by the fire marshal. That has not changed.
Right. So I just wanted the council member to be aware that that was something that already was reviewed by the fire marshal.
That would be correct.
And again, just for informational purposes, Mr. Eustace had referenced the circulation turnaround in the proposed lot to, I'm sorry, proposed lot during Phase 2. That was an issue that was discussed between Mr. Eustace and Panoni since the last workshop meeting, and they have come to an agreement. In fact, they submitted a proposed resolution to address that, that is acceptable to the borough engineer, that involves both signage, as well as additional space for that turnaround, so that this way, we won't have any concerns, I'm sorry, the- so that this way we won't have any concerns, I'm sorry, the applicant would not have any concerns with turnaround issues of people in that second-phase parking area.
I'm familiar with the things, the fine things that are going on in that area going into the parking lot. My question was that part of the piece of road that would go from the entrance to the parking lot past the safe property to Johnson Highway. That's what I was questioning about, which connection would be done at all?
Yep. So I believe the section of the road that you're referring to is up by West Johnson Highway, and that is correct. So during the Phase Two operation, it is the intent, and it will be built in Phase Two, to bring in a much more compliant access drive off of West Johnson Highway, which would be fully paved, twenty-four foot wide. It would meet the fire marshal's requirements as it relates to the ten percent or less, where currently that does not take place, as far as the existing driveway does not comply with those requirements. So we're going to enhance that connection during the Phase Two operation.
Councilman Jones.
I had a question about the islands. We discussed some type of greenery in maybe those spaces, but what benefit, having the additional spaces at the zoo, what benefit would that create for both the zoo and for the municipality?
Well, from an operational standpoint, what it does is it allows to accommodate eighteen additional spaces, which would also therefore relate to an additional eighteen available spaces to bring the cars off of Harding Boulevard, out of the neighborhoods, and into the zoo's parking facilities. So that's the benefit to both the zoo and to the municipality and the surrounding neighbors from a functioning standpoint.
Have you discussed having a lot of trees on the ground also?
So currently, the, as far as the landscaping goes, the area that is left to plant is basically all spoken for, and therefore we would be looking for a fee in lieu of on those islands.
Thank you, Madam President. While I appreciate the need for eighteen additional spaces, I am concerned that we are reducing the number of islands in the green space to kind of combat the sea of concrete and the heat effects. I'm sure there are some environmental implications that this amount of concrete versus having it broken up with the green space islands is going to have, and again, on your, you know, patrons that are walking across this, you know, concrete surface in the summertime is going to get very hot. So I would like to see islands. What are you proposing? I mean, the guideline right now is looking for a minimum of twenty-four, based on the number of parking spaces you're proposing.
That would be correct.
So what are you suggesting in lieu of the twenty-four?
Well, we are still proposing the landscape islands at the end of each row of parking.
How many would that be?
So we're seeking relief from eighteen of the, out of the twenty-four. So you're talking six, I guess, for-
So there'd be six islands instead of twenty-four?
Right, for the Phase One. I think it's a total of thirty-two. And so for each parking lot, we are proposing to comply with the landscape requirements as it relates to the islands on the end of each parking lot. So it would really pertain to the infield of the parking lot, that we would seek the relief.
So the islands would be on the ends?
That's correct.
And nothing in the middle?
That's correct.
So it's that, it's not going to be broken up by any green space?
Correct. Now, what you have to keep in mind is that the configuration of the parking lot, there is an extreme amount of landscaping that is being proposed. In fact, the two main fields, roughly ninety cars per field, is separated by eighteen feet width, and is heavily landscaped. You have retaining walls, and it's terraced. So we're doing everything that we can to enhance that look, because part of the desire here is to also make the parking lot, it's the initial impression of the zoo. So it's not something that the zoo is going to just try to incorporate just a field of asphalt. You know, they want to make it a pleasant experience. They're going to the expense of putting in the elevated boardwalk to save all the mature trees where they can from the parking lot into the main gate. So they're going to great expense. That boardwalk alone is quite expensive. So it's part of the stormwater management on the environmental side. We're capturing the water, and we're putting it below grade for a good portion of it. That allows the water to cool off. We're reducing it to what is allowed by the codes and per DEP's requirements. So we're meeting all these thresholds in addition to the parking that you would see out there. Some of it you won't see, because it's below grade, some of the improvements.
Thank you. Councilman Perry.
I have a question. The last time we were looking for paperwork that came from the state, did we require those first already?
Yes. So earlier in the week, we had submitted some of the documents that we received from DEP to Jane and to Cal, demonstrating that we've already just recently gotten their updated approval as it relates to the wetlands disturbance, which was discussed at the last meeting.
So I have a question, and just a clearer understanding. So with the additional, with the islands, would that call a financial burden on the zoo? Or an unrelated expense that you chose not to pay up?
Well, a financial burden over time. It's not being able to accommodate eighteen additional carloads of potential patrons. So you multiply that a couple times a day if there's a changeover, seventy days a week. So there is definitely a loss of income that the zoo would realize if these spaces were provided. I guess that would be the best way to describe it.
Councilwoman Scott Cooper.
I have a question for my solicitor. And I guess I just want to get more clear understanding. The few islands that they have there will not have any bearing on stormwater management effect.
That is correct. They still have an obligation to meet all stormwater management requirements, and according to our engineer, they will meet those requirements, which is why I wanted to make sure that I pointed out to council that not only will they be paying all required stormwater fees, they will also be required to meet all stormwater requirements. So if for some reason, let's say, one island or eighteen islands was providing some level of stormwater management, now that they are gone, they would have to make up for that in some other way, which is also why I wanted to point out to council that they are proposing various stormwater facilities that already address the stormwater concerns that were at least raised by the municipality's engineer.
So then basically, you know, just being primarily the look that is going to change because of the increase in number of islands. Does that affect anything else except for what some may feel as a beautification?
And, so first, let me press by saying, I'm just a humble lawyer. I'm not an engineer. So I can't necessarily comment on the aesthetics, but it would certainly seem that part of the reason that it's in there is partially for aesthetics, in order to break up the visual impact. It sounds as if they responded to at least how you would see it. It sounds like it wouldn't be seen. It sounds like it'd be somewhat below the road, not to mention the additional buffering that they're proposing along Harding Boulevard, as well as the buffering and trees that are going to be placed on the terraced areas. I don't know to the extent that maybe, if you're talking about snow plowing, it might even be easier to plow without a-
It will.
-a parking island there, too. So it sounds like there might be some efficiencies that are gained there, but I suspect that partly the ordinance has placed it in there for aesthetic purposes, for a visual impact when you're there.
And one other question. This is for Mr. Zone. I guess, relating to the number of spaces that you want to have additional, which is what, two forty, if we're right? Have you determined throughout the years that the pinchment list has been increasing, that the two forty is what you really need, or you anticipate future growth?
The two forty will satisfy a lot of what is there now, but with the growth of the zoo, two forty will satisfy, you know, just with what's there now. It's going to take a lot of cars off the street. The plan is to get them all off of there. So it's not being built for future, it's being built for what is occupying the zoo currently.
Councilman Perry.
Well, Councilman Scott Cooper, our engineer is right there.
I understand.
He's sitting down. I mean, I thank the solicitor for that answer, but I believe we got an expert that's sitting right there that could have answered that, because I'm not sure why he didn't answer that.
Thank you, council member. Perry.
Do you still want to ask a question?
No. Well, I guess my question was answered. The first one regarding whether or not the stormwater would be affected by the increased number of islands, and our solicitor said no.
Yes, that's correct.
And the other question I have to do was with aesthetics, that the main reason that I think we're having this conversation, since the stormwater management is not going to come into play, is because of how it's going to look. And we're concerned about how it's going to look. And then Mr. Zone said that this is not for future growth, it's for what's needed now. So you've got to answer all that question.
Correct.
All right.
Councilwoman Lewis.
Don't sit down yet. So not only is it the aesthetics, I'm more concerned with the heat of that vast amount of asphalt. So is there any geothermal implications for the islands not only being so few, but actually on the ends of the parking lot and all the greenery on the perimeter, and not breaking up the concrete?
Yes, they, so they do have planting islands at all the ends of the parking spaces. They do have a planting strip, though, in between the parking lots. So because of that planting strip, they have a lot of canopy trees in that planting strip, which, you know, led us to where we would grant, we would recommend a waiver of those planting islands.
So how many spaces are in each lot? Then if they're divided by a strip, so there's, I mean, what?
Well, so they would have to have, per the ordinance, ten, every ten spaces a planting island.
Right. You said there's a strip between both parking lots.
Correct.
So how many spaces are in each lot that this strip is dividing?
So, that's the landscaping plan that gave us. It shows the planting strip.
Okay, I see it. So how many spaces are in each, or, you know what I mean, on each side of the planting strip?
So I believe what you're referring to, there are trees placed at every twenty-five feet along that entire stretch. I believe the parking field is forty-five foot, I'm sorry, forty-five spaces on the lower and forty-five spaces along the upper, so for approximately ninety spaces along that common landscape island.
Okay, so then there's a hundred spaces somewhere else?
I'm sorry?
Because there's going to be a hundred and ninety spaces.
Well, that's just, that's just along the common landscape island. I believe that's what you're referring to. Each field is approximately ninety spaces.
Right.
Top and bottom.
So this, so I'm just trying to understand, this planting strip that's going to be dividing the parking lots, that's what they're saying, is this is separating the two spaces. So how many parking spaces are in here?
Approximately forty-five and forty-five are a total of approximately ninety spaces.
Okay. And then what, they move back this way, the spaces?
That's correct. And then you have another, here's your driveway, and here's the other row of parking, the same row up here.
Okay.
Cars are being-
Going back this way. Okay, gotcha. You can have this way. Thank you.
Council, any other questions? Councilwoman Smith?
I think Val comes through a lot of my questions about whether or not stormwater had any real effect, and visually whether this was going to be just a sea of concrete. But just as we approach warm weather and people starting to come out the zoo, I was wondering what the timeline on the expanded parking lot was.
Well, it's going to be basically, as soon as, that's okay, as soon as possible. We would prefer to start sometime in April. One of the things that will be contingent upon that, obviously, is the timing of the approval here, which therefore also impacts the ability to finalize the approval as it relates to the Montgomery County Conservation District and Orphans Court. Yes, I'm sorry.
So start in April, hoping to finish approximately?
I'm going to say within forty-six days, forty-five days.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'll turn it back over to the solicitor.
Thank you, Madam President. So with the discussion completed with regard to the waivers, at this time, as I had mentioned earlier, I would like to have an oral vote with regard to the waiver requests. First, are there any council members have any objection to my breaking up the waivers into the two sections that I previously mentioned, which are waivers one through sixteen, which I will call the non-parking-island waivers, and then seventeen through twenty-one, which I will call the parking-island waivers? Hearing no and seeing no objections to that, I'm just going to go forward then. So would a member of council like to make a motion to approve waiver requests one through sixteen as set forth in the proposed resolution? With a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So that, by my count, means one through sixteen have all been approved. With regard to waiver requests seventeen through twenty-one, would a member of council like to make a motion to approve waiver requests seventeen through twenty-one as set forth in the proposed resolution?
Seven.
With a motion and a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, so numbers seventeen through twenty-one are also approved. With that, Madam President, with those approvals, which would be waiver requests one through twenty-one, would a member of council like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number, thank you, nineteen dash one zero five of two thousand and nineteen, granting preliminary and final plan approval to the Norristown Zoological Society for the minor land development development of a three-phase expansion of existing parking facilities? Madam Secretary, could please have a roll call vote?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Derek Perry, Rebecca Smith, Heather Lewis, Sonya, oh, sorry, Sonya Sanders.
Aye.
So I think that completes my portion. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome, Mr. Solicitor. Next sort of business we have is for the municipal administrator, beginning with ordinance nineteen dash zero one for fireworks use.
Thank you, Madam President. What you have before you, council, is ordinance nineteen zero four one, an ordinance for fireworks use, and this basically is an ordinance which would amend Chapter one sixty of our municipal code, which, regarding the regulations of the use, sale, and storage of fireworks. As council is well aware, and at council's direction, we have looked at this ordinance in conjunction with our fire chief, our police chief, to deal with issues of safety, noise, et cetera, in storage and sales of fireworks in Norristown as it relates to the recently passed state law for fireworks. And we have advertised this as council-directed, and it's now ready for motion to provide more restricted use- more restricted use of fireworks in the municipality.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Counsel, any questions? Councilman Perry.
Did any residents show up at the advertisement in regards to this, or give any feedback in regards to this?
We have not had any, any, any feedback regarding the advertisement of it, no.
Okay. Well, the other is just a comment. Finally, you know, residents have been talking about this for a very long time, and I'm glad that we finally stepped up to the plate and putting something in, in order to, you know, at least remedy some of the stuff that's been happening in our town. So definitely appreciate all staff's work in regards to this.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Counsel, any other questions? Seeing none, would a member of council like to make a motion adopting the proposed ordinance 19-01, which would amend chapter 160 of the Norristown Municipal Code regarding the regulations of the use of fireworks within the municipality? Madam Secretary, may I please have a roll call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Derek Perry, Rebecca Smith, Heather Lewis, Sonya Sanders.
Aye. The ayes have it. Ordinance 19-01 is approved and passed. Next order of business we have is for Norristown Day, the alcohol waiver.
Counsel, what we have in this item is a request from the Chamber of Commerce, there we go, from the Chamber of Commerce in support of the Norristown Day event, is the waiver of the municipality's alcohol or code, the section of the code related to the sale and consumption of alcohol, so that that might be, that might happen at Elmwood Park in conjunction with this event, and essentially would be opening another beer garden during that day as we have done in prior events at 4th of July. And so it, council has, certainly has the discretion to waive that in support of the event, and that is the request.
Mr. Jones, could you please provide the constituents with the date of the Norristown Thank you.
April 6, I'm sorry.
Counsel, any questions? Comments? Councilman Jones?
I just had a question about the, I guess, vendor license for selling alcohol. Is it, is it something that we see a decent profit margin from, as far as, you know, you take alcohol versus a regular food vendor?
Well, what typically happens is the vendor sells, sells alcohol. We get, you know, permitting for, for use of the park for the event, but it's basically the vendor selling, selling the alcohol.
I just wanted to say, I think alcohol sales makes, it earns a lot of revenue, so maybe later down the line, we can look at ways, when it comes to issuing permits for the sale of alcohol versus food. Yeah, so maybe we can look at that in the future, you know. Just thinking about the amount of money that is made selling alcohol, so I thought maybe we should be able to capitalize on that. Not sure if other communities do, but something to look into. Thank you.
So Councilman Jones, are you stating that you would like to have the fees increased for those that sell alcohol?
I would say we can at least look into it and see what other townships or communities do. You know, it might be for someone to come in with a very minimal amount to rent a space, but to make a large profit, it might be something we can look into.
We'll, we'll certainly look at it, counsel, you know, when you start getting into the sale of alcohol and state regulation of alcohol as it is in Pennsylvania, that proposes some different challenges. But we'll look at it, and if there's an opportunity, we'll certainly bring it back to council between here and that point.
Thank you, Mr. Jones and Councilman Jones. Any other questions? Comments? Seeing none, would a member of council like to make a motion for the Norristown Chamber of Commerce to waive a section of the municipal code to allow the sale and consumption of alcohol in designated areas of Elmwood Park as part of Norristown Day? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing, hearing none, the ayes have it, that motion is approved and passed. Next order of business we have is the Norristown five-year financial plan.
Thank you, Madam President. Counsel, as you're aware, Norristown was awarded a grant in 2018 to work with the National Resource Network on a five-year financial plan for the municipality. We've been working, including council, and members of the community and staff have been working with the National Resource Network and the folks at PFM who support that operation over the last year, in terms of doing a lot of work evaluating the municipality. And the, the folks at the National Resource Network are now prepared to make a presentation to council, which is essentially their final report to council on this project. I know we have standing at the podium, Mr. Gordon Mann, that you all are very familiar with. We have Ms. Vian Luong, who's also sitting out in the audience, and Ms. Ashley Lewis as well, who've been instrumental, particularly in working with the team and other folks in, in putting together what we think is, is an excellent document and a great blueprint for how we operate and how council goal sets in the coming years. So with that, I'll turn it over to Gordon to make the presentation. I know I need to run down and turn on the projector, and I'll do that.
Sure. Just tell me when to press the little button here. In the meantime, I'm going to ask if either Vian or Ashley, if you don't mind distributing the plan document itself, this, I, I could go ahead and get started here with our, with our introductions. In the meantime, my name is Gordon Mann, I'm from the National Resource Network. The National Resource Network is a consortium of five organizations, as Crandall mentioned. I'm all set, okay. As Crandall mentioned, the, I'm from public financial management, we're a financial advisory firm, we're a company based in Philadelphia, we're a national company, but based right in downtown Philly. Our second lead on the project here was the Enterprise Community Partners, that's a nonprofit organization based out of Washington DC. What the network, give me one second here. Oh, it's coming, all right. So what you have in front of you is the full plan document. What I'm going to talk through tonight is a condensed version of that. So as Mr. Jones mentioned, this project actually started in September of 2017, so it's, it's about a year and a half old, and we've condensed this down into, oop, I saw it there briefly, into about 15 minutes. There we go, all right. See if I can make this a little larger. All right, great. So the National Resource Network was established about five years ago. It was initially established as a cooperative venture with HUD, with the housing, with the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development. It was a big, a big initiative for President Obama at the time. He brought in, for those of you who are football fans, Richard Sherman to make the announcement, Rose Garden, the whole to-do, and it was part of what the White House calls the strong communities, Strong Cities, Strong Communities Initiative, and that program, and that program still exists today. But whereas the program started with federal funding, it's now largely funded by private foundations. The money for this work, which again paid for, I think it's either 70 or 90% of the work here in Norristown, is from the Arnold Foundation, which is, is a private company. What the network does is it provides assistance to communities who are looking to improve what we call economic competitiveness. What that means is simply communities that are looking to strengthen their position when it comes to retaining residents and businesses and attracting new ones. What we've found since the Great Recession officially ended in 2010 is that a rising tide hasn't lifted all boats. There are some communities that have grown, but there are many communities that have not, that have continued to struggle with poverty, with population loss, with unemployment, even in a time where, from a macroeconomic perspective, the economy is very, very strong. So the network about a year and a half ago now solicited, solicited applications from different communities, reached out to about 60 communities nationwide. We've previously worked with about 55 across the country. The other three that we've worked with in Pennsylvania over the last five years were Wilkes-Barre, Scranton, and Pittsburgh. And Norristown applied in September 2017. The previous finance director and Mr. Jones submitted the application. We did what's called a site visit. We came here in January, I think we met with a couple of folks, a member meeting Councilman Jones. We talked with folks from the Chamber of Commerce, from the County Redevelopment Authority. We did a series of interviews and phone calls with Mr. Jones and with the staff here. And then what we made a determination is that there was a match between the types of services that the network provides and the types of services that the community was looking for. And for the most part, what this program does is it provides multi-year financial planning assistance. That's a lot of words for doing the following. Every year, council passes a budget, and then throughout your year, you act on that budget. You spend dollars on that budget every day, you get reports on that budget every month, and that budget is effectively the financial backbone for what your government can do and what your government can afford. It sets your tax rates, it sets your headcount levels, it sets your salaries in conjunction with the collective bargaining. Anything that is involved with mon, with money, which is to say almost anything that's involved in municipal government, is keyed in off that process. That process generally starts sometime in the fall and runs hopefully through sometime in December. But what this process does, what the multi-year financial plan does, is take that financial perspective of a one-year budget, where you adopt a document that runs from January 1st to December 31st and says, let's take a step back and think about this document from a long, or from this process from a longer period of time. So we do two things in that process. The first is we say, okay, if we take our hands off your financial steering wheel, if we don't change the tax rates, if we don't change headcount, if we continue giving employees the level of raises that they've historically received, where does the, where does the car go? If, in a baseline status quo scenario, if you change nothing, if you all walk out of here and never pass another ordinance or resolution related to finances, again, what happens? So we walked through that diagnostic scenario with, with council, and I think made a presentation on that back in September of last year. For the most part, most cities in the country, and as well as boroughs, municipalities, school districts, villages, particularly in this part of the country, when you do that, what you see is that your revenues don't grow as fast as your expenses. Or put differently in the, in the perspective of personal finance, your income doesn't grow as fast as the bills that you have to pay. And we'll talk a little bit more about why that is in a second. But you have this projection, which often shows a gap, a deficit, between revenues and expenses, and then you, you come up with a series of options, say, okay, obviously I don't want to have a deficit, I don't want to, want the things that are associated with that. What are the different options we have to close that deficit? So the first part of the plan is the baseline assessment, you can think of that as the diagnosis you get when you go to the doctor, and the second part of the plan are the, is the treatment options, hopefully a menu of options that you can look at and say, okay, this one, this one, and this one makes sense for that, for us, this one we have to think about, and that one doesn't. So that's the engagement we walk through. The plan document that you have, which you've just received, what we hope you'll do with, is a couple of things. Well, this is the last time you'll see our smiling face, I think, in this particular context at least. This is just really the start for you. So this is a 95-page document, it's got lots of numbers and words in it. We hope the first thing you'll do is read it, digest it, it will take some time to get through, discuss it, adjust it, because there will be things in here that you like and things that you don't like, and then implement it. What this plan is not is magic. This plan, as thoughtful as it is, will not change anything in and of itself. It will if you take it and you use it, though. So that's what our hope is, is that this plan document will become a part of your budget process, will become a part of your comprehensive and land use planning process, will become a part of your hiring decisions, and become a part of everything you do here, not because it's written from an omniscient, omniscient point of view or it's perfect, but to give you a, a sense of how the different parts of municipal government connect together, hopefully into a strategic whole. The second thing we provided, which we provided a couple of weeks ago, and some of you may have seen it already, is a dynamic budget model. It's really just a fancy word for an Excel spreadsheet with some really cool formulas in it. But what it does is it takes all of the revenues and expenditures here in municipal government's budget, and then projects them out over a period of time, so that you can look at that and say, okay, if I hire five cops, what does that do? If I change the tax rate, what does that do? If I get some sort of parking revenue from some situation, what does that do? So that you could do scenario analysis, and not just in your head or on the back of an envelope, but on something that mimics your financial, your actual financial structure, and then could feed directly into the budget process whenever you get that far along. We have a lot of numbers, and we're, we're numbers-driven. You know, our, our, our company name is not creative, but it is descriptive. We are public financial management, it's what we do. But we understand that not everybody lives in the realm of numbers or is super excited to talk about them. So give me a few seconds here to try and tell you what I would see as this, as the sum total of this Norristown plan. If I were trapped in an elevator with somebody for 60 seconds and they said, tell me what the Norristown plan is, I'm not sure why they would ask that question, but tell me what the Norristown plan is, here's what I would say. Over the last decade or so, Norristown has spent a lot of time working to become competent and credible. Most of the folks that we met when we came here told us about the stories of the bad old days, about a decade and a half ago, going back to the change of government, about the FBI raid, about the six years of audits that were missing, and all the things that folks that are here now and folks that have been here in the past have had to do to clean up. And that has largely been successful. I think the, the Norristown municipal government has been able to show, not just that it's not corrupt or incompetent, but that it's stable from a cash perspective, that it's credible in the rise of, of credit rating agencies. The, we'll talk a little bit about this in a second, but the municipality has a credit rating, which means when outside organizations look at Norristown, they say, yes, they're good for it. They're going to pay what they're owed, or what they owe in full and on time, and in fact, we think their financial position is actually relatively strong in comparison to other communities. It's capable of providing municipal services. You had the, the appointment of the police officer and the firefighter earlier tonight. So Norristown has, over the last few years, this is a long elevator ride, this is much longer than 60 seconds, has proven that it's, it's competent and that it's credible. What we hope this plan will do is take you to the next level, so that you can be cooperative, so that you can be constructive, so that you can go from just paying the bills, balancing budget, providing core services, which is the baseline and the things you're already doing, to be a constructive partner in making Norristown a vital urban hub. When we say that you have financial progress, these aren't just words, these are, because it's finance, these are numbers. So up at the screen, and again, these are all, these are all excerpts from the plan itself. Every year, you produce a document called your CAFRA, your Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And there's lots and lots of numbers in it, but for the finance folks, we look for a few numbers to see how you're doing. One, we want to see how much cash you have on hand, because we want to know you're not going to run out. Two, we want to know how much reserves you have, which is not just the cash you have at the end of the year, but the money that you can reasonably expect to receive at the beginning of the year, because we want to, that's a sign of stability. And what's happened since 2012 is that the, the cash is on the left, the fund balance is on the right, is that those numbers up until about 2015 had grown. What's the right number of reserves? Well, the industry standard is at least two months, or at least 16%. You look, may look at those numbers from a different perspective and say, wow, why should Norristown municipal government have $11 million in the bank? And there's a couple of reasons for that. One is, you need a contingency for when there's snowstorms, for when there's a recession, for the things that you can't predict. But more than that, at a more basic level, government gets its income from taxes, and taxes don't arrive on January 1st. The real estate tax generally arrives sometimes in the spring. Your employees, however, expect to be paid on January 1st or whenever their first payday is, so you need cash on hand at the beginning of the year to pay those bills and to pay your employees before your income comes in. And you want to be in a place where you really don't want to borrow money from the bank to essentially just keep the lights on. So this is a positive picture. The financial institutions look at that and say, for a, for a community with Norristown's demographics, that's pretty good, that's a, and the city has a, or the municipality has a higher credit rating than Wilkes-Barre, Redding, Easton, other communities that demographically would look like Norristown, Pottstown. The other thing that is that this plan is not just about numbers, although there are a lot in here. When we came and we did the site visit, what we wanted to know is, okay, so Norristown is financially stable, so is some other percentage of governments around the country. What are the opportunities to do something different here? And from an outside perspective, so from someone who's not on your Chamber of Commerce and doesn't live here, we see that there's a lot of good reason for optimism. I was going to say something about the zoo, but they were just here for the last 45 minutes, so I guess I don't- so I guess I don't need to do that. But what we did notice is that you have the transportation center. That gives you access to a larger labor market. That makes the community, relatively speaking, more attractive for residential properties. You have some development along the waterfront, the Schoolkill River waterfront. There's an opportunity zone designation there, which is some federal tax credits, so there's some momentum there. County government is making an investment in Norristown. They have a $281 million campus redevelopment project. That's the county courthouse. The state is making an investment here. The Turnpike Commission is working on a slip ramp, which would improve highway access into downtown Norristown. There's the potential for the state hospital site redevelopment. And there's a number of other things that point to Norristown as a place where you don't just have the financial capacity, if you make some hard decisions over the next couple of years, to move this community forward, but there are actually some opportunities to do that. Now, we also want to be realistic. The way you qualify for national resource network support is that you have some trends going in the wrong direction. The criteria under the program would be either that your population is dropping at a certain level, which is not an issue here, your unemployment rate is growing at a certain level, which is not an issue here, or your poverty rate is growing at a certain level. And that's the criteria under which Norristown qualifies. So the folks here can see on the screen, the poverty rate growth, two things. One, bottom line in the chart, it goes from 16.5%, which is relatively high, to almost 22%. So that increase in poverty from 2010 to 2015 is the first sign of trouble. The second is if you compare Norristown to broader communities with the understanding that Norristown is completely unique within the context of Montgomery County, right? With the exception of Pottstown, demographically, we would not expect Norristown's poverty rate to be comparable to other communities. But if we put it in the context of the state or of the country, it's higher than, obviously, you'd like it to be. And it's not just poverty or numbers on a demographic sheet or on your census form. When the community applied for help, what they said was three things. One, we're troubled about the loss of homeownership or the trend with homeownership, where we have more and more rental properties and more and more lower-quality rental properties in our community. Two, we're troubled about the stigma that people still believe that crime is a problem and that Norristown is somehow unsafe, even though your crime rates are, from an objective standpoint, dropping over the last five years. And Norristown, on a crime rate perspective, is not unsafe relative to other places like it. And the third issue is litter or poor property maintenance, which feeds into the previous two. Someone drives in from out in the suburbs, they see trash on the street. They may feel less safe, even though there's not necessarily a direct connection. They may feel that there's less comfortable parking downtown, coming to downtown events or looking at houses. So addressing the cleanliness issue was the third reason that the community had for applying for this project. So the first step of this, which is about 35 pages in the report, I'm going to distill down into one, right? And this was the conversation we had in September of last year. What you see there is a projection of your bottom line. If your revenues exceed your expenses, then you have a surplus. That would be a positive number in the brownish color there. And if your expenses exceed your revenues, you have the opposite. You have a deficit, and then you would see a negative number there. We don't have your 2018 numbers yet. They will be coming out at some point in an audit of form. That usually happens much later in the year. But what the budget for 2018 shows is revenues $1.1 million below expenses. And what the 2019 budget shows is revenues $1.4 million below expenses. So if you're thinking about that from a personal income standpoint, "How could I pay my bills if I had, you know, some amount of money?", the answer is your reserves. So those reserves that we talked about earlier, that are the scoreboard that financial institutions look at and what investors look at in determining, in trying to get a snapshot of Norristown's financial stability, those are headed over at least in 18 and 19 in the wrong direction. Putting it more simply, using your reserves is akin to using your bank account to pay for your groceries. Eventually, you run out of money in your bank account, and you still get hungry. If you do nothing, and that's not going to happen, but if you did nothing, the projection is that the deficits would grow, continue to grow, about $2 million next year, $2.6 million in 2021. Then, because your debt service drops off, the amount of money you pay for past projects drops from about $3 to about $1 million, the deficit actually shrinks, so it doesn't grow out into infinity. But that's assuming you never issue debt again to do anything else, which isn't going to happen. So two things about this. One, this is not predictive. This is not what's going to happen. This is a diagnostic situation to say, "Okay, how big is the hole and how fast do we need to act? Where do we get some natural help on its own?" That's the first thing that this is designed to do. The second thing this is designed to do is to take the hundreds, or I'm not sure it's thousands, but hundreds of lines of your budget and distill it down into one bottom-line figure and say, "Okay, this is the financial challenge that we need to address over the next few years." So we move from the finances out to stuff that people care about, right? Obviously, you do care about your finances to some extent, but if you're watching at home, you know, the cash flow situation for municipality government is probably not super interesting to you. But here's the theory. Government needs money, not because government is a bank or because it's a business. It's not in the business of making money, but it does need the money to do the things that it is in the business to provide: police patrol, fire suppression, paved roads, code enforcement, zoning, all the things that local government provides. If you don't have money, you can't do that. It's pretty basic so far. What you want to get to the point is not just that I have money today or that I have money tomorrow, but I know that the recurring money that I bring in will be enough to pay for the recurring expenses that I charge. That's what we call structural financial balance. Once you get to that point, you have the ability to make investments. So what are investments? Well, some investments are basic. Fire trucks break, police cars break, buildings get holes in the roof. You need to replace those things. But some of the investments are a little more forward-thinking. Some of the investments are involved with blight remediation. Some of them could be involved in stimulating economic development. Maybe there's more of an investment in projects that result in a cleaner community or the perception of a safer community. So there are investments that are on the government side, in the institution that, frankly, needs to keep running, and there are investments in the community so that the people who don't come to City Hall every day can see those and see the benefit of their tax dollars at work. The hope here is that as you make the right investments, what will happen is that your tax base will grow. And here in Norristown, we're talking about two things. Pennsylvania law sets your taxing powers. You can't levy a sales tax here because state law doesn't allow it. But you have two taxing powers. One is your real estate tax, where you tax taxable property. So governments, colleges, hospitals, churches, those things aren't taxable, but businesses and private residences generally are. And the second thing you have is the earned income tax. And this is the key thing to remember for economic development. You tax folks based on where they live, not where they work. So the biggest boon to you from a tax revenue perspective is not necessarily a business moving in with 50 jobs, unless all 50 of those people are going to live here and they don't already. A building that brings 50 residents in, where you will get their income regardless of where they work, that's the way the Pennsylvania law is set up to benefit you. You could talk about whether that's good or bad, whether you like it or not, but that's just frankly the way Pennsylvania law works. So as we're thinking about projects, when we say, "What is tax base growth?", that's what we're looking for. Things that will actually take your earned income tax and your real estate tax revenues up on their own, so that you don't have the pressure to increase the tax rate, so that you can fund the things that you need to do, so that you can deliver the services that people value, so that you can increase the tax base, and so that the cycle can start over again. That's the basic principle behind the entire 90-page document that you have. We talked to a variety of people, the advisory committee, council members. The advisory committee had a handful of community volunteers in addition to some council members, which I very much appreciate. And we came up with a list of eight goals or signposts. And we said, "Okay, we think these, regardless of what you think of our ideas for getting there, we think these are the right eight goals for you to focus on over the next five years. Three in the finance area, three in the operations area, two in the economic development." The three for finance are very much driven by the scoreboard that financial institutions watch. Are you able to pay your bills? Do you have a deficit? And we have a goal of trying to shrink that deficit and close it completely by 2021. Why not earlier? Because frankly, it's too big to try and close all at once. And also, you don't need to close it all in one year. You do have some reserves, and some use of reserves to close that deficit is appropriate. But what's not appropriate is to use more and more and more of your savings every year to pay for your growing grocery bill. The second thing that we talked about with you was, "Okay, what is the right number to have in the reserves?" Again, the standard in the industry is 17%. When we met with council, there was some desire to take that up to 25%, and frankly, 25% is probably not too high, because you need, the stronger your reserves are, the more enables you to balance off some of the things you can't control, like directly, like your poverty rate. So when a credit rating agency or investor looks at you, they may say, "Their poverty rate is high, but they've got some extra cash, so I feel better about loaning them money at this level." As crass as that sounds, that's the way that process works. And the third thing really is that credit rating. Again, I know it looks silly, double-A negative, but that is a relatively high rating. The standard in poor, the rating agency has different tiers, and this is the last rung in the high part of the rating scale. And most communities, frankly, with Norristown's demographics, don't live in that range. So that's already an aspirational thing that you're up there. Keeping it is a sign that you're making the right decisions in the financial realm. Not just about finance. So on the operations side, we have the three goals. The first is to improve the perception of Norristown as a safe and vibrant community. Part of that is crime, and Chief Talbot's Police Department has done a very good job in terms of working and bringing the crime rate down. So there's a part of addressing perception that is, "If I go to Norristown, something bad won't happen to me." But there's another part of this, which is the positive perception. "If I go to Norristown, I can do something cool or good or fun." So the Recreation Department actually becomes the natural partner of this in terms of showing a vibrant, active community. It's not just safe, which is bland, but it's vibrant, which is more attractive. The second thing is in terms of the spaces and making Norristown cleaner. Two types of spaces. There are public spaces that you maintain, this building, the streets, the bridges, the parks. There are private spaces that you don't maintain, everything else. Public Works handles the first group of properties, Code handles the second. So there are initiatives in here to bolster those two areas. And the third thing is just frankly to make the investments you have to make to keep municipal government running. You have cop cars now, but they don't last forever. You eventually need to replace fire trucks. You've had a lot of conversations, I heard some of them, about making renovations to this building. Making those types of investment in what local government is so that local government can continue to provide the core services it provides. On the economic development side, the two goals, one is related to the opportunity zone, which I'm pretty sure Jane has already talked to you about that. That's a federal program that has a limited window on it. Folks have to make the investment decision, this is a federal tax credit program, by the end of this year, and then the funds have to spend the money next year. So this is one of these deadlines driven by things outside of your control. And the other is neighborhood redevelopment and improvement, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a few seconds. Now, I'm not going to walk through all these initiatives. Again, the last 45 pages of the plan are all our cool ideas for advancing those goals. And some of them advance more than one, and some of them are calibrated in such a way because these goals aren't always mutually cooperative. You could push the fund balance real high at the expense of providing the right services. Or you could push the fund balance real high by raising the tax rates to a level where you can't do economic development, or vice versa. So we're trying to recommend a mix that we think finds that balance. Different types of initiatives. Some initiatives you have to do to address trends that are just out of whack. If your revenues are growing more slowly than your expenditures, then we have to recalibrate both sides of that. So that's one category of initiatives. The second category are labor initiatives. Most of what you spend money on are your people. There's no wage freezes in the plan. There's no recommended layoffs in the plan. But you do have to be thoughtful about, "What can I afford to provide in terms of employee compensation at the tax rate that my employees can afford to pay?" And then the third thing is the revenue side. We generally don't start with, "How do we fix your problem by getting you more money?" We generally start by saying, "How do we fix your problem by bringing revenues and expenses into balance?" And so there's both aspects of that in our plan. And then the investments, I had already talked about those. The plan has a lot of ideas in it, and you're not going to be able to do them all at once. There are practical limitations. Some of the ideas in the plan you can only do as part of the budget process, which is that three- to four-month window at the end of the year. Some of them you can only do through collective bargaining, which is whenever the collective bargaining agreement expires. And frankly, everybody has other jobs here. So we're not trying to overwhelm people with, "Here are 50 things that you don't have time for that you should do because we say they're good ideas." We're trying to phase this in over a period of time and give you themes and principles to focus on for each individual year. So for this year, our recommended theme is to maximize non-tax revenues. That looks great on a brochure, right? It's to focus on the revenues that you bring in, and here's the reason why. You need revenue diversity. You don't want to have all of your eggs in one basket or your table just leaning on two legs, the earned income tax and the real estate tax. Those taxes, first of all, are just paid for by your residents. So if we're trying to spread the burden of providing municipal government to everyone that receives that benefit, the people who work here, the people who visit the Elmwood Park Zoo, if we're trying to spread that benefit around, we have to find some way to diversify your revenues other than those two taxes. The second principle here on the economic development front is, again, you do have a time-sensitive process here with the opportunity zones, one that Jane is very well aware of and is working on. But when she comes to you and she says, "Look, we need to make decisions or we need to take actions on this," she's right. The deadlines are driven by federal law. And the good news is, is you have an opportunity zone. The less good news is, is so do lots of other places, right? So this is competitive. Erie, the city of Erie, has 13 opportunity zones, just because they're bigger. And take all of the cities in the country, and there are hundreds of opportunity zones. So this is competitive. That said, you have, pun intended, I guess, opportunities that they don't. You have a relatively concentrated area. The opportunity zone is basically East Main Street along the waterfront. You have some momentum to do things there. You have a focus thing, so when Erie says, "Come talk to me about 13 places," you don't have to pitch that. You can be more focused. But the opportunity zones over the next 12 to 18 months, if you're going to hit that home run on that pitch, that's your timeframe to do that. And the last thing that we recommend focusing on this year, even though your contract with your trash collector doesn't expire this year, is you need to get some help there. One of the things we heard is dissatisfaction with the private collector, and one of the things we saw is the Public Works Director, who went off to solve the building problem, I think, he's been tracking the hours that his time spends on things. And there's a fairly substantial amount of time that his crew spends on trash collection, which shouldn't really be the case, because trash collection is not a municipal government function. It's something that the private contractor is supposed to handle. But the reality is, when someone picks up the trash and there's trash left behind and it's blowing in the streets, or someone does illegal dumping, somebody's got to pick that up. And that somebody is you. That somebody is your Public Works Department. Some of that may be because, you know, weather or whatever circumstances. Some of that may be because the contract that's in place maybe isn't being followed as closely as it should. And some of that frankly is because the contract that's in place needs to be rewritten. There are people out there who can help you do this. We're not PFM, so we are not lobbying for business. We are not trash financial management. That's not what we do. But there is someone at a relatively low cost who could come in here, who understands the bidders, who's worked in that part of the world, and can help you get a bid out on the street that, one, may attract enough bids so that it's competitive, that's what will help with your price, but, two, get the right provisions in there so you have the tools to say, "Hey, it's not okay that you left half of the trash behind on DeKalb Street. Here's what you're going to do about it, and here's what the financial penalties are going to be." Your time to lock those terms in is when the current contract expires, but your time to figure out what you want in that contract is right now. 2020, we say hard decisions to close the gap, and these decisions really come before 2020, because they would have to be part of the 2020 budget. You see the baseline projection there, the $2 million hole, that's that if you do nothing. If you do some of the things that are on that last slide, we think those things are worth about $0.5 million. So, "Okay, $2 million hole, I filled in $0.5 million. So okay, $2 million hole, I filled in half a million dollars, what do I have left? I have $1.5 million. And these are some of the ideas that we would have, that you would be thinking about pretty soon. Not for this year, but at the end of this year, for the 2020 budget process. There are some things in there where you just need to get things recalibrated. You can't continue to have your workers' compensation costs grow at 10%. There's no revenue in the world growth that's going to pay for that. You can't have your general liability insurance costs grow at 5%. Again, same thing. And there are some steps that you can take to manage those. One of the more proactive tools that we recommended is a land bank. And we talked about this in one of our meetings, I guess that was early last month. Because what happens in Pennsylvania is you get into these cycles. On the one side, you have a cycle where you have a property that's pretty crappy, I guess I could say that. And so Amerinder's staff goes out and they cite it, it does or it doesn't get fixed. Eventually, it finds its way to district court, and it does, it doesn't get fixed. And they kind of cycle through this. And on the other side, what you have is some of these crap, crappy properties people aren't paying taxes on. So they drop into tax delinquency. The county tries to get money from them, they may or they may not pay. And if they don't pay everything they owe, eventually they drop all the way down, and they go on to the market, right? Well, the problem right now is, you really can't control who buys that property. In some places, what you see is, one person has one, has one set of properties that they don't maintain, and then as those slip out of their hand, they reach out and grab some more out of the sale. And then somebody else, who's also not maintaining their properties, reaches out and takes theirs. So it becomes like a shell game. And that's not always the case. Not everyone who buys delinquent properties is a bad actor. Not everyone who doesn't pay their taxes is, is, you know, being malicious in some way. But you need a way to break that cycle. So the land bank idea that's discussed in here is a way that, with the, with the help of the county, would give you some control over where these properties end up, or maybe just as importantly, where they don't end up in terms of what happens to them next. You're going through a process right now with another part of PFM with the sewer sale. The sewer sale is one of your chances to change your finances in a significant way. Concept here would be you sell the sewer plant, you get the money, you pay off the debt, and then there's some amount of money that you can use to do something. And what we're saying is, when you think about what that something is, think about it from the perspective of your needs, not just right now, but over the next five years. And then the last part that we recommend is the, which isn't popular, but I'll hit it head-on, is we think you're going to have to think about a tax increase for next year. What's in the plan right now is one mill, and this is the plan, so not in any way enacted, but somewhere in the realm of a one-mill tax increase for next year, and then a one-mill tax increase for 2021. Now, there are lots of things that you could do in the meantime to shrink that millage. I'll be entirely honest, I don't think there's anything you could do in the next 12 months that are going to make the need for the millage go away. Well, how do I know that you need a millage? Because you're already spending more than you have. Remember? You had $1.1 million deficit in the budget in 2018, and $1.4 million deficit in the budget in 2019. So that hole's getting bigger over time. And there are things that you could do on the expenditure side to close it, but pretty rapidly, you're going to get to layoffs and wage freezes. Layoffs you probably don't want to do, wage freezes you really can't do, except within the context of collective bargaining. So while there are lots of things on the expenditure side, and again, that's primarily where we started, we, what we, what we say here is, don't take the tax increase option off the table. So the council president, the last time I met with her, asked a really good question that I wanted to hit, and I'm almost done here. She said, hold on a second. You told me that the whole gist of this plan is to attract residents and businesses to this area. And now you're telling me you recommend a tax increase. Isn't that counterproductive? Doesn't raising the taxes make this a less attractive place to live? My answer to that would be yes, if it's the only thing you do. If the only thing you do out of this 90-page plan is increase your tax ordinance the next time around, that will be a failure. Not only will it not fix any of the other issues that we're talking about in terms of quality of life, it won't even fix your financial problem. Because it will just bring the plateau up to meet your expenses now, and as your expenses grow, you'll have that gap again, and you'll just be right back to doing it again. The only way to address that problem, in addition to some of the cost control measures, is to see the tax base grow. And here in Norristown, that means to see either the earnings of the people who live here go up, the values of their property go up, or just frankly, to see more people live here, or higher-income people live here. So if all you do is the tax increase, that won't fix your problem. But if you don't make the adjustments on the tax revenue side, and if you don't find a way to balance your budget, whatever that is, what will eventually happen is your credit rating will drop. Your ability to invest in things like the building and your vehicles will deteriorate. Employee morale will sag. And guess what? Five years from now, you'll do a tax increase anyway. It'll just be way bigger and way more scary. So thinking about the tax increase, or the, the potential for them incrementally, as opposed to saying, what's the last possible moment I have to do it, and now I have to do a 20% tax increase? The reason we recommend, so that's, that's the super-good news in, in the plan. The reason we, we call that hard decisions to bring your budget into balance, is eventually there's light at the tunnel, and it's not 20 years out. Remember that I said that your debt level will drop on its own in about three to four years? And so what we're saying is, if you make those hard decisions this year and the next year, and then 2020 to 2021, you'll start to have room for investments. So the first recommend, set of investments we recommend are related to your vehicles. We have the list of vehicles, the list of mileage in the plan, when their, their life expectancy to expire, and we've tried to align your finances to the vehicle needs, understanding that not all cars or fire trucks are going to last as long as, as, as we would like them to, but so that when the fire truck reaches the end of the, if its useful life, or when the bulldozer reaches the end of its useful life, there is a money and a plan to pay for the next one, and you're not scrambling to try and fill that void. So, not the most exciting or, you know, sexy investment in the world, but something that you need to keep the municipal government running. What we would say after that is, once you get to 2022 and 2023, now you have the opportunities to do some of these other things. Now, you're going to issue debt before 2022, but your ability to pay for that debt will come when you're, when the current payments drop. Think of it as kind of a little Tetris chart. And when the little blocks start to drop off, that's when I can fill them in with new blocks. That's when I can fill it in with new borrowing. So, the debt that you issue this year, the, the payments for it may not be on the principal for a couple of years. But that will give you an opportunity to do a couple of things. That will give you an opportunity to fix this building, right? So that's a priority for the police, that's a priority for the people who live here, or work here, hopefully no one lives here, and that's a priority for, for the community overall. Consolidating fire stations. Chief O'Donnell is a, has some ideas in some ways where he believes that you can move from four leased fire stations to one or two new fire stations for about the same amount of money. And your new, your old fire stations probably need to be recycled into something. I don't know whether that's, you know, Five Saints Distillery Part II, or whatever it is, but they need to be recycled into something. They were built in an era where your fire trucks don't look like what they look like today. They were probably poured, pulled by horses and buggies. So, you, you need to make those investments. And then the economic development, divestments. One of the things that we have in here is, you have a bunch of opportunities from an economic development perspective. Some of them are grand slams. If you can get the state hospital land and develop that in a way that increases your tax base, that's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that doesn't come around, obviously, very often. Some of them are home runs, right? If you can get development along the riverfront and take a rundown, or vacant, or dilapidated building and turn that into something productive, that's also something that's, that's something that's noteworthy. But, as the, and I'm stealing this anecdote from the, from the county RDA head, some of them are singles and doubles. Some of those are, these are taking smaller parcels of land and saying, okay, we don't have a concentration of blight on this block, but that thing over there, that looks crappy and that's got to go. Let's fix up that to stabilize this block. So we have some, some, some specific parcels that are in the plan, that you could take a look at from that targeted redevelopment. Now, I'm pretty sure there's still only 24 hours in a day, and Jane's got enough to do right now. So again, this is phased over a five-year period of time. We can't be saying, you know, the Opportunity Zones are a priority, and by the way, do these other three things too. But the, the hope would be is that, once you get through the Opportunity Zone push, some of these other targeted parcels would be something that you could, would look at. So let me bring it all together. Again, what we're trying to do here is give you a set of, a, we're trying to recommend a vision to you. We can't impart that vision on you. We don't live here, we don't work here, and you do. You have the opportunity to make this community into something better, and I'm not just telling you that because that sounds nicer than the opposite. You really do, from an objective standpoint, have a better financial situation as municipal government than other governments like you. We work around the country, we can say that to be objectively true. You really do have some unique opportunities here for your community, your size, and some unique assets. And if you make the hard decisions over the next few years to take that deficit that's going in the wrong direction, then you'll have the opportunity to make the investments so that you're not just being competent, you're not just balancing to zero, you're not just providing the basic things, this is that this community can really grow and flourish. That's the hope behind the plan. Again, there's a bunch to read and digest that I, I haven't touched on in my probably already elongated presentation, but that's the thrust behind what we were able to do over the last 17 months or so. Council President's gone, is that, there's no questions? No, don't clap. I will take questions, or I'll sit down so Amerinder can come up here and do his presentation.
Councilwoman Brady?
My question is that everything I'm hearing is saying a recession is underway. And does this plan take those factors into consideration? And are there items in here that mitigate the possibility of that prediction coming true? And help you to soften the blow?
So, the, the answer is yes, and in, in two ways. One, if there is a recession coming, then you need to be storing your chestnuts in your tree, right? You need to be getting to a point where you have a rainy day fund, so that when the recession comes, you weren't already headed in the wrong direction, right? Million dollar, a million four, two million, two-five, and somewhere in there, the bottom drops out. So that's the first thing. The, the getting a balanced budget becomes even more, get that balance before the recession comes, I guess is the first thing. Because once you get to the recession, you may have to do other things. The second thing here is the budget model. So the budget model gives you the opportunity, and, you know, that doesn't really translate well on a, on a projector screen here, is to say, okay, we're projecting that income taxes growth is 2%, or whatever it is. In a recession, what happens if that drops down to 1%? Or 0? Or it shrinks, it goes the other direction? And just start to say, ah, okay, so what does this mean for my hiring decisions? What does this mean for my, for my tax policy decisions? What does this mean for where, what, how big a debt, how big debt do I take out? What does this mean for collective bargaining? That's one of the bigger processes. So, the concept here of looking at your finances from a multi-year, and doing what you're suggesting, which is kind of that next level, which is sensitivity analysis, is definitely in here. We've tried to be very mindful with the economic development things here, where there's frankly not a lot of drawing off of current, of, of resources that you use to pay for operations, for simply that reason. Because what happens if I'm reaching for this thing and suddenly, you know, again, the floor sort of drops out on you? So we have tried to, tried to account for that.
Counsel, any other questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you. You opened up my eyes. I think we all have been no, knowing that we needed to increase revenue. And we typically think of more housing, more development, but you have opened our eyes up to other possibilities, that are true possibilities, and not make mine decide. But I think the whole bottom line is diversification is where it is, and that's what we have to do. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilman Perry?
Thank you for the presentation. You and your staff did a wonderful job. I know, I, I keep saying this, and I'm, I'm going to keep on repeating this. We met them at the National Leagues of Cities. And, you know, there's some people in this community that think that we don't go and really get the education part of what you do, and a slew of other things that we could possibly bring here. But once again, when we're going, there's probably like 50 classes all over the place, and only three of us are going constantly, or just two of us are going. I can't reiterate and, and say this enough, that when we're going out there, we are learning so much stuff and bringing it back from, from these classes. The education part is second to none, that, trust me, there is so much more that we don't even get to, to even bring back here. But if we all take a chance, or bring something to the table, it, it'll definitely change this town. And we, we even welcome the residents to talk to us, to make sure that, you know, maybe I might not be thinking of something that the resident is thinking. You know, we welcome it. This council has welcomed all of that. And, and once again, this is the vision that this council has for Norristown, that we want to move this town in a way that has never been done before. If this ain't an eye-opener for you, along with all the hires that we have done here with our staff, then I don't know what else we need to do here. But thank you again.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman Perry, and I'd like to echo that as well. I did find that this was an educational piece for those constituents that are sitting here, who didn't have an awareness of, when it comes to the end of the year, the tough decisions we have to make, when sometimes the difficult decision is to increase taxes. And we also, as council representatives, we pay tax dollars as well. But knowing that the bigger picture is for the future of Norristown, and to increase the, the rates of Norristown, it's, it's a tremendous decision, it's, it's a tremendous responsibility that we do take on at the end of the year. So we, we thank you again for your, your time, your insight, thinking outside of the box. And the constituents that aren't here, that did assist, that provided feedback to make Norristown a better place, we also thank them as well. And if I could, Mr. Jones, would it be possible to send those constituents a, a letter of gratitude for participating in this? So again, thank you, fantastic job.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you.
Next order of business we have is codes enforcement pertaining to the annual codes review.
No, no. Go to your file thing. Look for clicks here over here. Okay, what's going on? Let's just stop. Okay. Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I know it's late, the codes report is 99 pages, and I promise, I'm not going to read every single page. I'm just going to touch on some key highlights for last year here. One of the first things I just want to state is that the success of our codes department, it's a collective effort between not just the codes department staff, who are primarily the ones that are going out doing all this work, but all of the different department heads, council, and all of the staff members all across Municipal Hall, from the Finance Department, the Planning and Zoning Department, police, fire, Public Works, we're all working together to improve the quality of life in Norristown, include, improve and increase the property values and the overall characteristics of the neighborhoods to make sure that people are actually able to enjoy their properties and be able to enjoy them. So, first, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for helping us have a great 2018. And being a public servant, it's often, it often goes thankless. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank all the municipal council, municipal administrator, all of the municipal employees that we have in Norristown. You know, it takes a lot of time and energy to run a municipality, especially one of this size. There's long night hours, weekend hours, early morning hours, and generally, the public doesn't usually always get to see that. So, all the great behind-the-scenes stuff. So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for everything everyone does here for the municipality of Norristown. Just wanted to quickly go over some highlights and some achievements of 2018. We did put together some written standard operating procedures and policies in our department. This way, it will confirm that we have more consistent and uniform enforcement of our ordinances in a fair manner. So that was very important. We have put that together. We made many customer service improvements, from working and updating our forms, to looking into actually how and why we operate our codes department the way we do, to see how we can expedite some of the processes, eliminate some of the additional steps, and we have done some stuff like that. And in the next upcoming slides here, I'll be able to show you some of the great statistics that have gone up by us doing such. We created a mission, vision, and a purpose for our codes department. That way, all of us in our staff, we actually know what it is that we're here to accomplish every single day when we show up to come to work. And we also have been investing in staff development and training. That's very important. So we have been taking the entire department as a whole, not just one or two individuals that would usually go out to get trained, but the department as a whole has been going out to get, not just technical training on codes, but actually soft skills, customer service skills. That way, we can all do a better job in serving our constituents. So there's, there's a lot of things on the highlights, I'm not going to go over all of them, but two of the big things- But two of the big things, or a couple of the big things I would like to emphasize on is the fee schedule. We were able to make an adjustment to the fee schedule last year to reflect the actual cost of doing business in Norristown. As we went over late last year, a lot of properties, when they're under improvement, they are underreporting the cost of the value of the job. So when we looked into the past few years of permits, what we saw was about 70 to 75 percent of all the permits that were being applied for were reported under $5,000 in value of construction cost. And with that, the average permit cost was only like $99.50 to about $110. And a lot of people were taking advantage of that, whereas we would have to go out to do multiple inspections and the municipality was not actually recovering the true cost of its operations. And since then, we've made those improvements to the fee schedule, and you'll see at the end of this year and even next year, how that's actually going to make a big impact on collecting the right amount of revenue for the department as we move forward. So that was one of the success stories for 2018. Another one was, we started for the first time in the department's history, an exterior inspection program for every property in Norristown. Whether it's commercial or residential, we've been going block by block, building by building, and I'm going to get into the stats for that in these next upcoming slides as well. And we also created a couple teams within our department. We created the BEST team, which is the Building Enforcement Safety Team, and the PACE team, which is the Proactive Code Enforcement Team. And I'm going to share some of the stats and what we were able to accomplish by doing such in the next upcoming slides here. I'm going to skip on a lot of this stuff. Just wanted to share about the team. Not everyone has actually met all of our code enforcement staff members. So, this is our team that we currently have. Combined with everyone's experience in code enforcement, construction, and building safety, we have 132 years of experience collectively as a whole team. And we also speak four languages, English, Spanish, Punjabi, and Hindi. And looking at the Census Bureau information, English is obviously the main language in Norristown. Spanish is at the next level, and one of the next languages after that are Asian, from, from the Asian countries. So, we, we have India covered, but hopefully in the future we'll have other, you know, languages in the Asian area covered as well for who, you know, some of our constituents that actually don't speak English. That way, we can service them better as well. And we are actually in the process of changing all of our forms, not only just having them in English, but also providing them in Spanish and the other major languages that are spoken here in Norristown. That way, it's easier for property owners and business owners to do business in Norristown with the Norristown Codes Department. I'm going to be skipping a, a lot of pages and just concentrate on the main, main points here. So in 2018, we issued 1,683 permits. That's Building, Mechanical, Electrical, Plumbing, and Fire Protection. That's 365 more permits than 2017, which is an increase of 27.69%. That means more property owners are actually investing in their properties, which is a good sign. The average time for us to issue a permit was 7.2 days. And if we break that down even further, it's 12.14 days on average for commercial projects and 6.34 for residential projects. For a community this size and a department our size, that's a very great number to be able to turn around plans and permits. Now, I just wanted to note, note that these, these numbers here are for 1,131 permits out of the 1,683 permits overall. And that's because these 1,131 permits, when we actually received them, they were fully completed and they were able to be processed. The other 552 permits were excluded because, once we received them, they still needed to provide us some information. So that timeline, obviously, we were not going to count that as us not processing it. We're still waiting for supporting documents from the permit applicant. We completed 1,073 permit inspections, which is an increase of 14.77% from 2017. We issued 210 stop-work orders, which is an increase of 105% than 2017. And last year, $38,393,288.94 was pledged by property owners in improvements into their properties. And the reason why I used the word pledged is, once again, just because somebody reports on the permit applicant, application that this project is $10,000 or $50,000, doesn't necessarily mean that's the actual true cost that's what they're reporting to us. So this is what was reported to us by permit applicants. So, one of the other things I wanted to quickly go over was breaking down the data even further for issuing of permits. When we actually take out of the 1,131 permits, and we actually break down the data even further, 662 of those permits were actually issued within seven business days. I'm sorry, 58.53% of those permits were actually issued within seven business days. So on page 32 on the report, you can actually see how many permits were issued the same day, next day, second business day, you know, seventh business day. So this shows our commitment to customer service and how we understand the importance of economic development and how we want to make it as easy as possible for property owners to be able to invest in their properties and start their projects. So once again, for a department our size, to be able to have these numbers, it's, it's very good. I mean, comparing it to other municipalities, to our demographics, they're going to be double, triple, even quadruple these numbers. So, our team does a great job with taking care of that. So, just to kind of give an idea, like a visual aid, up top on the screen, it's not actually coming up as clear, but to kind of give council and everyone in the municipality an idea of where exactly work is happening throughout the town, we put together a map to show where building permits are being pulled, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection. So, as you can see, work is not just concentrated downtown or in particular areas. All over town, people are improving their properties, so that's very good. So, going back to creation of the BEST team, pretty much, we lacked in proactive enforcement for our permits and inspections. So we put together the Building Enforcement Safety Team, where we made it a priority, one of our priorities in our department, to make sure that we're actually following up on open permits, we're following up at job sites where there's work going on to make sure, you know, people are applying for the necessary permits or have the necessary permits or, and are getting the necessary inspections completed. So by us creating this team within our own office here, one of the things that we were actually able to do, and on the next slide, you'll actually see the breakdown, is in 2018, we were able to identify 2,415 violations related to construction jobs across Norristown. And if you look at that versus 2017, it was only 137. So we increased proactive enforcement on construction jobs over 1,600%. So that was one of the big things that we were able to accomplish in, in our last year here at the Building Department. Another thing that we, we're going to be talking about a lot of success stories tonight and where we excelled, but one of the areas where we needed to make improvements on and which we have done the improvements for already are open permits. So what would happen is, people would apply for permits, but they would never call us back for the necessary progress or final inspections. So we actually started reaching out to those property owners and the permit applicants to kind of say, hey, you have an open permit, we don't have an inspection on file, please contact us so we can take care of this. So, when I originally started back in June of last year, there were 2,599 open permits from 2013 till mid-June 2018. As of last month, February 28th, 1,568 of those permits, or 60%, have been closed out. And we only have 1,031 open permits at this time. And we're working with those property owners to get the necessary inspection scheduled. And some of them haven't actually contacted us, but we'll be reaching out to them again to make sure that we get access to the properties to perform the inspections. And just to kind of put that into a little bit of a bigger picture here, as you can see, every year, those are the number of permits that were closed out, starting from 2013. So in 2018, all year, we closed out 1,090 permits. And so far, just in 2019, in the first two months, we've closed out 953, which is 87% of everything we did last year. So all the permit applicants, all the property owners, they know now that we are being proactive and they need to contact us to get these necessary inspections done and that we're following up on them. So, this is a really good improvement that we are able to share here at the codes department. Another good, good thing that we're able to share is, we have changed ourselves from more, from being more of a reactive code enforcement department to actually a proactive. And the reason why I'm able to state that is because in 2018, we issued 5,568 notices of violations. These are not generated from rental inspections or property transfer inspections that are requested by property owners. Well, rental inspections, we actually request them for the property owner, but these are actual inspections that, when inspectors are going from neighborhood to neighborhood, they observe violations and they write them up. So in 2018, we issued 5,568, which is 120% over what was issued in 2017. So that's 3,480, uh, 3,400, I'm sorry, 3,048 more notices than 2017. Similarly, the violations are up. Obviously, more violation notices equal more violations. And then our quick ticketing is up as well by 5%. And if you look at the graph below, we issued, once again, we issued over 5,500 notices of violations in 2018. That's two, that's, if you take 2016 and 2017, we issued more notices in one year than the last two years combined. So that's how busy our code department has been. We've really been hitting the neighborhoods very hard, going out there and making sure that we are checking out these properties and making sure that everyone is doing their part for increasing the quality of life here in Norristown. On the next slides here, it just breaks down the notices that we issued even further by what our top 25 violations are, what we've identified during these proactive enforcements, and how we pretty much plan on doing a community outreach, reaching out to property owners, letting them know what the top 25, top 10 violations are. That way, property owners can automatically know that, hey, this is, this is a municipal code requirement, so they can already work on correcting it. And a lot of times, people don't know this is a codes issue. So, once we start educating property owners, we're hoping for more compliance down the road. Once again, the data is broken down from owner-occupied properties to rental properties, and obviously, the owner-occupied properties are in much better shape than rental properties as the data will show. And that's our proactive enforcement efforts throughout the town there. As you can see, there was not just a concentration on a particular side of town, we went all over town and did proactive enforcement. And I would just like to state that this actually doesn't even include our exterior inspection program, which we're going to be coming up to next. This is just, on the daily basis, inspectors going out and if they see issues, they've been writing them up. So, going back to utilizing data to see how we can help, you know, increase the quality of life and help increase the tax base, you know, one of the things we started looking down is, and looking up, looking into is identifying which areas of town we need to do better, a better job in concentrating our enforcement at. So the top 10 streets where we issued quick tickets are on this map here. And what we plan on doing is, we don't want to just keep going back every summer to ticket these property owners. We want to help educate them and tell them, hey, this is what is required for exterior property maintenance during this time of the season, and please do your job in making sure you do that. Because 42% of all quick tickets we issued were on these 10 streets in, in the last year. So we're going to try to do an education bullet, and hopefully this time next year, these numbers will be extremely lower. One of the areas, once again, there are some areas where our department needs to improve on, and this is one of those areas as well, which is rental inspections, especially since we are trying to be a more proactive code enforcement department. In the last five years, since 2014, we've actually inspected 55.50% of all known rental properties in Norristown. And that's a good thing, especially since our ordinance says, we may inspect you. There's actually not a requirement that rental properties be inspected during a specific time period. But we've been work, I've been working with Mr. Jones, I've been working with Mr. Calkenny, Mr. Hitchens, to go over what would be an ideal timeframe for Norristown, whether it's three years or five years. That way, we can keep inspecting properties on a regular basis to make sure that the residents are living in safe housing conditions. So, one of the areas where we need to improve are, there's about 1,700 buildings that we have not inspected, and our goal is, by the end of 2020, that we will have all of them inspected, and hopefully, they will all be code compliant by that time as well. Just a breakdown of some data of what we find during our rental inspections and what we plan to do with education outreach, and hopefully, property owners will have those type of life safety items and also just the general maintenance of their properties during inspections. Another thing is, top 10 streets where rental properties, we put that data together there. That way, we can do some more concentrated enforcement. Looking into, you know, the type of rental properties we have and the tax base, you know, we have 2,436 single-family dwellings in Norristown that are actually rental properties. You know, that was an interesting stat that we were able to pull together. We put a breakdown of the top six properties, property types here in Norristown. And what we plan to do with this data is, moving forward, as the zoning department gets any applications to convert more, you know, singles to doubles or, you know, four units to five units, we're going to keep monitoring this to see where we're going with everything. Property transfers, we did 670 property transfer inspections last year, and we found 18,616 violations during those inspections. Another interesting point for property transfers is, we were actually able to reduce the time for completing the inspections from the date of the initial inspection to getting everything closed out by 50%. So, in 2017, it was a 61.88-day turnaround time, and in 2018, it was 29.65. List of top violations for property transfers, where the property transfers occurred around the town. The next set of data we have is on citations. I wish the numbers were going down because there were more properties being found in compliance. That's why we didn't have to issue citations. But this is one of the areas where we are actually going to be doing more improvements at the codes department and where we'll be doing much better follow-up as far as if we find properties that are not in, in compliance with our codes, we'll be actually taking the property owner to, we'll be citing them and taking them to court to hopefully get some type of fines or penalties assessed against them. Not that that's what we want to do, we'd rather get code compliance, but sometimes getting the property owners in the pocket helps make them into, trying to make their property code compliant. So, as we talked about the building properties survey, this is, once again, on the, on the screen here, doesn't look as clear, but out of the 10,863 tax parcels we have in Norristown, we've inspected 7,853, which is about 72, a little over 72%. And the good thing that we found was, a little over 4,000 of those properties, or almost 52% of them, there were no exterior code violations, which means there's a lot of great properties in Norristown, and not just, once again, in a concentrated area, pretty much all over town. So we have some great property owners, and in the near future, we're going to be sending them letters to thank them for, you know, doing their part in keeping Norristown beautiful and maintaining their properties. Level-two properties, we found 2,075, or 26%. There were more nuisance violations, like high weeds of grass, trash, accessory structures, graffiti, very small things that can be corrected, and if they were corrected, they would also become level-one properties. The next slide here, we have the level-three properties. These are the ones with the life safety violations. So this is the chipping paint, the sidewalks in disrepair, broken windows, missing handrails, decks are in disrepair. So we've identified 1,684, or 21%. And at the level-four, we've identified 15 properties with critical violations. And with, using this data, we're putting And with, using this data, we're pretty much going to stay on top of these property owners into hopefully getting them into compliance and changing them from level threes to twos and twos to ones. That way, we have much nicer neighborhoods here in Norristown. These are the same goals in, for the 2019 goals that I had presented during the budget, so I'm going to skip them. Same thing with the 2020. One of the things we're going to work on is getting our Building Department accredited, uh, Building Codes Department accredited. And if we do do that, it would be the second department and the entire state, and one of only two or three dozen in the whole country that would have such a designation, and that will show investors and property owners of how serious we are with making sure that we have the most, you know, that we operate under the highest legal and technical standards and, you know, that we're here to work for, you know, all of the constituents. The next slides, we have the boards, committees, and commissions. We have a lot of vacancies. We're going to be working with Mr. Jones and the admin office to hopefully get a lot of these vacancies filled very fast, especially since we've increased our enforcement. We've done a lot of community service in 2018, where we go around and go to the hotspots, clean up neighborhoods. We participated in the Municipal Citizens Leadership Academy. We're actually looking to do a spin-off similar to how Chief Talbot has with the Police Department to do a Codes Academy as well. We found a lot of people were interested in that. We participated in our, you know, municipal-level contests and stuff like that. So the last thing I want to touch on is the finance stuff. The good news is, we spent less than 2017, and we brought in more than 2017. So our budget was 874,494. Our expenditures were 785,692. So we only spent 89.85% of our budget, and we were below budget by $88,802. And comparing that to 2017, we spent $25,709 less than 2017. The next slides are about the fee schedule of why we broke, why we increased the fees for the certain type of building and mechanical permits and electrical. Looking at the next slide here with the revenue, our total budgeted, our estimated revenue for 2018 was $1,177,500. And we actually collected $1,364,562, which was $187,62 more than what was actually projected. And percentage-wise, that was 115%. So 15% more, we were able to bring in at the Codes Department. And we can, we will continue to do that, where all of our services that we provide, we'll make sure that the fee schedules are, you know, set accordingly, that we meet all of our operational needs. So in 2017, in 2018, we collected $217,000 more than 2017. And, I mean, there's other budget accounts in there that we didn't add into our revenue source, such as the citations account, which currently the Police and Codes Department share, but we're going to be working with Mr. Norman and Ms. Rochelle and see how we can kind of split that off, where Codes fees will go into one account and Police will go into one, so we can get a bigger picture of how much we actually bring in, in the department. And obviously, you know, it looks like there's a little bit of additional revenue that we brought in, but there's some costs that aren't in our budget, such as, you know, the employee fringe benefits and stuff like that. Those fall under the municipal administrator's budget. But we definitely broke even, if not bringing in a little bit more than what we, what our cost is to operate in the municipality. And I'm sorry, it was a fast presentation, and I was just trying to get through it. So if anyone has any questions or...
Besides the fact that you are, I don't want to sound all mushy, you're like a dog saying. Because when you compare, when I first came on council, when you compare what you have done these past, what, eight months? How long you been here?
Eight months.
Oh, wow. It's amazing. And I, I think that every one of us appreciate you more than we even know. But I drew a couple, real quick questions, real quick. I think it's amazing, on page 38, where you had the building, the amount of safety issues, violations, for 2018, 2,415, as opposed to 2017, 2017, 137. And you've done all that? That's just amazing to me. To me, it's like, you know, the old saying, you go get the whip and whip your kids and they start working harder? And I know you didn't do that. But I, I know what you're saying. I think that you are doing such an outstanding job. You're really commendable.
I mean, the team, the team, we have a great team here, and...
Okay, so I'm giving credit for credit.
Thank you.
Councilmen Jones.
I just want to echo Councilwoman, Scott Cooper, yeah, yeah. Long night. You know, grateful to have you here. And, you know, you came in, you mentioned, you know, you had some experience in parts of New York and parts of, was it Redding or Lancaster? You know, knew right away that you would be productive. So you've really helped make the town a little more efficient, much more accountable, and, you know, the quality of life is changing. So a lot of folks may not be happy after getting these citations. They might, you know, they might be used to just getting by and not being enforced, but it's ultimately making a big difference. So, and the customer service approach has also been noticed, you know, not just with me, but, you know, from residents. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lewis.
Ditto to all of the aforementioned comments. And I also want to thank you, because I think you probably were listening and paying attention to when we were saying that we have to find areas of revenue. And the fact that you're now looking at permits that folks are undervaluing so that they can pay less in permit fees is huge. And I really, really, really appreciate that. I'm sure, you know, it'll make an impact in the 1.4 million deficit that we're trying to make up. So I really, really appreciate you doing your due diligence, your team, everyone, like Val said, they can only do what the leader shows them, and it's an exemplary product that you've given us. I don't know if I was looking up, but you skipped past when everybody's dressed up for Christmas. So you have to look in the book to see those holiday pictures. I'm like, wait a minute, they all, you know, so that was really cute addition. So it really shows that you're, you know, you have a team player, and your, your team is on board with your leadership, and that, it really shows. So we really do appreciate you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Brady.
A lot of times, people think of code enforcement as a very negative thing, and they're always red in anything from code enforcement department in terms of items that are problems with their house. What I like is that you've included a positive reinforcement process with these exteriors, with these exterior inspections. And letting people know that not, you know, we're not always here to recognize the bad things, but we're here to recognize the good things as well, and to kind of reward you with a pat on the back, to maybe make each other your property as well maintained. And hopefully, this will allow people to feel good about themselves, and also maybe help their neighbors who aren't taking care of their properties to allow them to experience that same kind of gratitude from your department. So thank you for putting that positive spin on things, because so often, we do so many negative things about what's going on in code enforcement.
Thank you.
Council, any other questions? I'm sorry. Councilman Perry.
I forgive you. We've got to get a couple laughs if it's going to be late. Definitely want to, you know, give kudos to you and staff. I know we have conversations for hours when I come into office, that, you know, there was a culture that was created here in Norristown, and if we don't change it, no one will. I'm glad we taking, we are taking the necessary steps to make sure that the residents of Norristown definitely know that we want to see Norristown move forward in a different direction than it always has been. And I will continue to keep talking to you, and I can't wait till you come up with the other ideas that we have spoken about, as well as see some of our updated ordinances, which we know probably hasn't been changed in so many years. So I can't wait to see that also. But kudos to you and the staff, and we definitely appreciate y'all just keep making Norristown look good, make us look good at the end of the day. Keep up the good work.
Any other compliments for code enforcement? Yes, ma'am. Would a member of council like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting? All in favor? Meeting adjourned.